We're moving in progress.
It is just after seven Wednesday, October. Thank you. Ninth, and I would like to call the meeting to order with roll call.
Councilmember Alfs.
Here.
Councilmember Hefty. Councilmember Taylor is absent. Vice Mayor Haskell.
Here.
Mayor Wernikoff.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Christine. Tonight, we do not have any presentations or proclamations, so we will go right to the town manager report from our interim town manager, Corey Stoker. Corey.
Thank you, Mayor Wernikoff. Just a few quick updates and announcements. Thank you to the League of Women's Voters of South San Mateo County for hosting the Portola Valley Candidate Forum last night. I heard it was a great turnout and had some really thought provoking questions. Another announcement is that the town council will have a special meeting on October 30th at 7:00 PM for the Mid Peninsula Open Space to receive a presentation on the Hawthorne Area Plan. Again, that's October 30th at 7:00 PM. And another thank you to Tony and the Finance Committee for their commitment to work on our finances and the budget. The October 1st was a great meeting, and we look forward to the upcoming meeting next week on October 15th. I know there is some confusion on staffing. There's been a little bit of turnover, and we're working to get the website updated, so then we have the proper contacts in place and the applicable changes, and I hope to be able to reach out to the community with some updates soon. On that note, I do want to thank Carrie Chen for over five years of dedicated service to the town. To say she will be missed is an understatement. She has such fabulous energy and has been an active participant in so many of our wonderful town events. I speak for everyone when I want to say thank you, and we're so grateful to her contributions and her bright, bright smiles. On the same note, we're very happy for her next step towards a management role in the communications world and a role that's a little bit closer to home. I consider Carrie a personal friend, and I'm very sad to see her go, but again, we're very happy for her next step. And last, unfortunately, we still do not have any updates from HCD regarding the housing element. I know Terrence, our interim planning and building director, does reach out to them weekly, and we haven't heard anything yet on our stats. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey, and I know all of us on council echo your comments on Carrie's departure and certainly wish her all the best, and she will certainly be missed. Are there any questions or comments beyond that on the town manager report? Nope. All right. With that, we will move on to oral communications. I do see a couple hands raised here in the schoolhouse noting these are for items that are not on the agenda. Thank you. Come on up. Thank you.
Dale Fow, 5030 Alpine Road. As you all know, we're facing an existential fiscal crisis, and this meeting is primarily about spending money. I'm going to object to every single spending topic of this council until we have a clear financial outlook and a cash flow. We are spending cash that our revenues do not support. However, the real important issue is how did we get here? The past five mayors have allowed this town to skip five years of audits and spend profligatefully without any real fiscal roadmap or how we would pay for the consultants and programs they supported. There was never a valid excuse for skipping the audit, and there is none now. Without the audits, we've been flying blind, and the past five mayors were responsible for our current crisis. With competent leadership, we would have seen this coming three or more years ago. Ronnie Presley did a great memo to you. You can see the trend. It was visible three years ago. Councilmember Alfs, you once said that we could blame you. I do. Along with the other four prior mayors. The fiscal decisions made by Councilmember Alfs and Mayor Wernikoff are appalling. There's an old saying in business, you can't trust the people who dug the hole to get you out. I have no confidence that Mayor Wernikoff or prior Mayor Alfs made competent fiscal decisions for the remainder of their term. I'm asking them to resign immediately.
Thank you. Any other hands raised?
Here, Lynne Vertonghen, 100 Palmer Lane, Mayor Wernikoff, Vice Mayor Haskell, members of town council and staff. The town finances are not the only concerns we have repeatedly brought to your attention since 2019. Tonight, you are approving minutes of the housing element, yet part of that element continues to be ignored. The town has an obligation to provide reliable energy, reliable internet, reliable communication, reliable water pressure, quality of water, adequate sewer systems. I can go on. We, the residents, have and continue to address these issues because they are simply necessities and especially important in emergency situations. May I remind town council that you promised safety as one of your primary goals? So please make sure that the town is ready for any winter storms, hopefully no earthquakes or any other disaster. That being said, I'm surprised to see the agenda of tonight again not addressing any of these overdue issues. I also want to remind you that the town has been allocated a grant. Originally, it was submitted for flashing beacons, but since the grant would only cover one-third of the cost, I understand that you are deferring the project. However, Mary Ann Durwin, mayor at the time, confirmed by email, January 26 and 21, that staff often applies for grants without completed or approved project plans. Applying for grants does not mean that the grant money needs to be spent, nor does it typically require a specific element of a project, in this case, the flashing beacons. Before Howard left, he was very concerned, and he made sure that that grant got extended until November, this November. Over the last five years, we have disclosed the problems with many of town trails. Many are part of the safe routes to school. We have submitted pictures, and I'm asking you tonight to review the grant and see if there's any way you can use that money to improve the Sausal Trail, Georgia Trail to Ormondale, Upper Alpen Trail. Corder Madera was supposed to solve the drainage issue there. We don't know where they stand. And the intersection at Portola Road and Alpayron. We don't want our kids to stand in the mud. Our town property, and if not taken care of before the rain, it will become several public safety issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up in the schoolhouse.
Good evening. My name is Duff Sunheim. I'm the vice president of the Portola Valley Ranch, and you clearly have a number of issues that you're facing. And I just want to speak on behalf of the association and the over 200 homeowners to say that we want to be a constructive, positive partner in dealing with the issues that have been mentioned here tonight and the others that are going to be addressed tonight. There are serious concerns we have at the ranch, but we're confident that working with the council that we'll be able to address them. So we just want to say that as you try to find people that want to work with you, the people of the Portola Valley Ranch are ready to stand with you to address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to hands on Zoom. First up is Rita.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for taking my comment, my question. You know, I have real concerns for many, many years about the town finances and just looking back on emails from years and years and years of me sending emails because I had to start sending emails, and some of the answers I had gotten back concerning year ends and audits with promises of things being done in the next two months or the next couple of weeks or numbers being corrected. And so, you know, I'm saying this because, you know, we do have Tony and some other people in the finance department now, and they're probably wondering, why is this town so pessimistic when I say I'm going to do things or I'm just changing this document and it's not going to change any numbers? Well, words mean a lot, and looking at those words and those promises, it's very discouraging, and it's from years ago. And as a previous speaker spoke, you know, the council was much different when I was receiving those messages back from Jeremy with all kinds of promises. And at one of your previous meetings, when the current audit, which is, I believe, is the 2020-2021 draft was almost approved before the draft was finalized without a visual by all of the council members and the community, I was worried that this was going to happen again. And I've been looking, but please, for the public's ability, we've waited so long. Can a complete draft be put out so that the residents can read through it and look at the words and that we're signing off? Because in the past, you know, words have been promised or things have been signed, and they're not correct, and we need to start putting things out there to correct. And also to the state, we need to start putting things out there because the documents that were sent years ago saying that we had no fire hazards. And those documents, I believe it was that special meeting that December, and then there was a document that was sent on, you know, mentioning all the counties that were signed in San Mateo County. And we must sign it and send it on, and it was incorrect. And those poor people in Sacramento and looking at our town saying, oh, well, I have this signed document from them saying that they don't have a fire hazard. But that's what put us in this position today. So please, moving forward, let's review the documents. If you need help when reviewing the documents, I'm sure the residents, as you've noticed recently, are willing to step up and help and move those things forward. Because in the end of the day, we're paying the cost of not reviewing the documents and receiving emails with lots of promises. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rita. Next up is Christine.
Thank you. I am really concerned about the finances of our town, and I'm asking the town council to consider our staff opening our town center for 40 hours a week and working 40 hours a week and have it be open to the public 40 hours a week rather than 14. I think we would appreciate that at this time. And if we do a fiscal emergency, I'm encouraging the town council and the finance meetings to happen more often rather than every two weeks for council and finance committee as every two weeks. But I think more meetings would be necessitated right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. One more hand raised on Zoom. Peter Lippman. I think you need to unmute yourself, Mr. Lippman. You're still showing as muted. Give it another minute, like a couple of seconds here. I think I'm going to note, are there any additional hands raised in the schoolhouse? With that, I believe I'm going to close oral communications. If you come back on, Mr. Lippman, at a future item, and you are still wanting to talk, I can pull you on at that time. And with that, I am going to close oral communications, and we will move on to the consent agenda. So consent agenda is agenda item five. Does anyone on the council want to pull any item on the consent agenda?
Five B.
Five B.
I have a quick question on H.
Okay, 5H. Mary, is there anything you want to do? All right. I would love to entertain a motion on 5A, C, D, E, F, and G. Thank you. Thank you. Public comment on the consent agenda. Please join us.
As I said, I'm going to object to spending items. I'm looking at a $91,000 severance package for the prior town manager. If I read the contract correctly, if he was fired for cause and was not allowed any severance, we can look at the information provided by the finance committee. In the space of about four months, we went from a four or $5 million surplus in the general reserves to 1.7 or something. That is a three to $4 million discrepancy in the space of a few months, and this was supposed to be our financial wizard. As far as I'm concerned, that is grounds for immediate dismissing. Also, we have 20 some odd thousand dollars to our illustrious lawyer. We're spending $20,000 to $50,000 a month on legal fees. That's unacceptable. In my opinion, every single project needs to be approved with an estimate ahead of time and signed off by a vice mayor. You guys need to get a handle on your spending. If you just go this way, we're going to spend another $1 million on these. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Don't see hands raised in the schoolhouse. And none on Zoom, so I will close public comment on the consent agenda. And I would love a motion to approve items. I'm sorry, I'm going to pick. It's A, C, D, E, F, and G.
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Alfs.
Aye.
Councilmember Hefty. Councilmember Taylor is absent. Vice Mayor Haskell.
Aye.
Mayor Wernikoff.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Jeff, item 5B.
Yeah, this is the minutes from the September 19 meeting. It lists me as absent. I'm pretty sure I was here for this meeting. Actually, I take it back. It lists me as both present and absent, just to clarify, I was present.
I noticed the same thing.
Thank you.
And with that amendment, I will move to approve item 5B.
Second. Ball call.
Councilmember Alfs.
Aye.
Councilmember Hefty. Councilmember Taylor is absent. Vice Mayor Haskell.
Aye.
Mayor Wernikoff.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Judith, item 5H.
Yeah, on page 31 of the packet, there's the summary of the response to findings. And for finding F1, our response is we agree with the finding, but there's two statements there. One is that sanitary conditions of the exterior fall outside current inspections. I think we can know that. And if that was looked into and we agree, then that's fine. However, the next sentence is judgmental. It says the varying unsatisfactory conditions, et cetera, shows something is lacking in the regulatory process. I don't think we should be agreeing with a policy statement here. I'm not sure if there's an explanation, though, for how you looked at that. And for further context, finding F5, for example, it said the town of Portola Valley does not have information available to agree or disagree. And to me, unless you've done some work to understand the regulatory process and made a judgment call, we shouldn't be agreeing with both sets of statements in F1. 31.
I believe we have Terrence Grindall, our interim planning and building director, on Zoom. Terrence, are you there?
Yes. The change that's been suggested would be perfectly fine. I think that would clarify the letter. I don't think there's any need to. I think that we can make the adjustment and move forward with the letter.
So to make sure I understand, you would, we could split this into, we agree with the first sentence, and on the second, we don't have information available. Does that, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, that's what I understood your comment to be, and that would be be fine.
Yeah. Just for context, that would be fine with me.
Okay, we can make the proposed changes if we want, depending on the other comments.
Any discussion or comment on that request?
I mean, reading the report, I actually pretty much agreed with the full comment written, honestly. I mean, it is clear there's, I was fine with agreeing with both parts of the statement, to be honest.
Mary. I'm fine with the change. I'm fine with the change. All right. I think we're in agreement that we're all good with the change. And so we would like a motion to approve this with the amendment to finding number one, F1, rather. Did you move?
Yeah, I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Alfs.
Aye.
Councilmember Hefty. Councilmember Taylor is absent. Vice Mayor Haskell.
Aye.
Mayor Wernikoff.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you, Christine. Okay, moving on to the irregular agenda. The first item is consideration of awarding a contract to Matrix Consulting Group for a user fee nexus study in the amount not to exceed $66,000, and this is going to be presented by our Director of Finance, Tony McFarland. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, tonight's item is to authorize the interim town manager to enter an agreement with Matrix Consulting Group to perform a user fee study and a nexus study to develop development impact fees. Back in August, we issued an RFP that went out to several aggregators. At the time, there were 10 concurrent RFPs for the same studies. We received two interest notices, one from Matrix, one from, it was a group in Sacramento. We received one proposal from Matrix. They are local. They are based in San Mateo. They've been around since 2003. They have done over 1,700 of these types of studies with governmental agencies up and down the state of California. The user fee study and the nexus study is needed. We have not had one done in over almost 10 years. We need to update our fees and given the financial crisis that we're in, making sure that we're actually charging the appropriate fees at the right market amounts is critical. Also, we need to have a professional organization do this because if any of our fees are challenged in court, having a professional study done by a professional group makes it that much more defensible. Also, there are government codes, state propositions that play into effect for these user fees. And having a consulting group that is well aware of these government codes and propositions will only help us make our fees much more defensible. But tonight, the item is to authorize the interim town manager to enter a group with Matrix Consulting Group for an amount not to exceed $66,000. The RFP that they proposed was for $76,000. That included a cost allocation plan, which we are not going to include in this process. We'll just be doing it for the nexus study and user fee study. Proposal is going to be for nine months. However, if we do it in less than nine months, the cost should be less than $66,000, but it will not exceed $66,000, and it is in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Questions for the council?
Yeah, I vaguely remember doing this roughly 10 years ago. It might have been longer. What's the usual interval between these for your town?
Well, that environment is changing every time there's a proposition or there's a court challenge. But yeah, the recommendation is do one at least every five years.
Mary.
The price tag seems very high. Can you, how does it compare? I've just done a few minor inquiries around about other people's efforts at doing this within the last five years, and it's considering the size of our town, and it seems.
Correct. I mean, there's still a lot of research that they will have to do. And, you know, I think Woodside just recently did one for $65,000. That was the cost, or that was the proposed amount. We may have paid less than that, but that was the proposed amount that we received and authorized. So it is the going market rate for these types of study.
And then maybe this is not to you, but is there any possibility they would give it as an installment plan?
You can ask.
Anything else, Mary?
No.
Judith.
Yeah, we ended up with only one proposal, so it really is incumbent on us to get pretty comfortable. This is in the range of market. So based on your experience and your inquiries, I'm hearing you think it's in the range of market.
Yes, the last fee study I was involved in was in Scotts Valley, and that was about five or six years ago, and that was about $50,000.
Okay. And the three pieces, without diving into huge detail, there's the user fee, there's the nexus, and we're not doing the cost allocation. Can you help me understand what each of those pieces is at a very high level?
The user fee would be all our charges for services, our building permits, but the rentals for recreation fees and field rentals. The nexus study is for the development impact fee. So if there is a development, we have to determine if we're going to do like a road impact fee. So if there is a development, we have to determine if we're going to do like a road impact fee. The nexus study will help us develop how much impact will be on the roads, and that's why those studies are needed. The cost allocation plan, that's just basically the cover, our cost recovery for our staff time related to anything that's done on behalf of an act.
And why are we not doing that?
We have a pretty good cost allocation plan in place. It's just basically, yes, have to update current market rates, our labor rates. So I didn't think it was, we didn't necessarily have to do it. Or include have them do it. We could probably do it ourselves.
Okay, so so, for example, the nexus study, in theory, paves the way eventually if we are allowing a lot of housing to be built, if we want to have supplemental fees added on, we can only do that if we have a nexus study.
Yes.
Okay. That's it for me.
Yeah, I had.
Yeah. I had some similar questions along the lines of the differences between the user fee and the nexus study, and I guess, well, as far as the user fee goes, is there an expectation that we would, after we have completed it, be increasing our fees and therefore be able to recoup the cost of the contract? Or how do we think about that?
So how this will work is they will do their analysis and they will, here's the proposed sheet, and then council will decide how much cost recovery do you want? Do you want seventy percent cost recovery, eighty percent cost recovery? So that'll be based upon what council decides, and then from there, we can determine, based on current activity, if it's going to increase or increase or not increase rates, what the impact will be on revenue.
And then our, is it, is it without this, and given that we haven't had one for the last ten years, is this is a little bit of a rhetorical statement, but is the concern that we are not charging the market rate?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, and then another question is user fee, is it, would it be possible to bifurcate this contract and just do, for instance, the user fee and not the nexus study? My understanding is the nexus study also came up in the context of the post-approval process and preparation for anticipation of projects. Given that we don't have any projects specifically, you know, anything other than pipeline projects, I'm just wondering if there's opportunity to defer that part of the study, you know, when we have a better handle on our budget.
Okay, the proposal they submitted is good for ninety days, but it is in three parts. So yes, council can say we just want to do one part or two parts or three parts, so it's completely up.
So where was that broken, was that broken in, out in this proposal that way?
There was a pricing attachment, and it has it in the three parts. And then the the nexus study, we have to, they have to do an analysis and be qualified for it, then they will, they will do the nexus study. But yeah, there is a pricing sheet. It was one of the attachments in the contract.
Got it. I'm getting there.
But yeah, you, we can do all three or just one.
Right, okay. So this is on, are we seeing it yet, Judah? Yes, it's on page one forty-six. It looks to me that the user fee is twenty-six five. Cost allocation is ten. Project-wide tasks, I don't know how that would get allocated, is eleven. And impact fee is twenty-eight. So there is, so, for instance, if we wanted to move forward with just the user fee, we'd probably have that amount plus some portion of the project-wide task allocated. Okay, that's helpful. And my understanding, I was trying to look back at the Kirsch report relative to this, and the Kirsch report references, they use the language master fee schedule. It's the same thing, right?
Yes, the user fee study helps build the master fee stuff.
Okay, so that was identified on that list. Just to note, it was identified as review at a later date, but again, the Kirsch report came out about a year ago at this point, so. Oh, and then why do you think we only got one proposal back?
Like I said, there was ten other cities within the area that were asking for the same, and I think it was just, it was a seller's market.
A supply and demand situation, or there are just not a lot of companies that do this type of work, or?
There are quite a few companies, but when you have ten cities asking for the same, within the same thirty-day period,
Yeah.
It's just pick and choose. And given our size, probably.
Maybe less attractive. Got it. All right.
I have one other question following on. So is there any logistical issue with only doing the user fee now? Do we lose some synergy or some efficiency in not doing the impact fee now?
Well, their proposal was based on doing all three. So yeah, I think there's some economies of scale that if we were to go back out and say, can we do the nexus study, the pricing might be a little bit higher. For the one.
Yeah, sorry, I misspoke it with the nexus study. But conversely, are these numbers only good if we want, if we only want to do the user fee? Do you think these numbers are going to hold?
Like I said, the proposal is valid for ninety days.
And we can pick and.
We can pick and choose based on that pricing schedule.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a follow-up on on that. Is there a place for going out? It's been since August now. Is there a place for going out and asking again, for anybody else who wants to try and do the job?
Again, it's the market. If other cities are asking for the same item, we may run into the same issue with only receiving one proposal, and we may not get a proposal for Matrix if we go back out.
So you can't just add it in?
No, I have to start the process all over.
And how long do you think it'll take us to regain this amount of money outlay with income?
I would probably say one to two years, depending on how we the cost recover, I mean, there's some variables that I can't answer that question.
Whether we're ready, whether we're ready to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And one last one, which is, what's the phase two concept? We have to meet criteria to.
There's certain criteria that they need to meet in order to do the nexus study. They do the analysis, and if we qualify, then they will do, then they say we can do the nexus study. I mean, we could say, do the nexus study, they can do their analysis, come back and say you don't qualify and not do the nexus study at all.
Because they say the total fixed price in that case would be fifty-three.
Right. That's if we did, if we did the user fee and the cost allocation.
Okay. Got it. Any other questions? Right, I'd like to open it up for public comment. One hand, one coming to the podium in the schoolhouse.
I'm back again, rejecting the spending money we don't have. I'd like splitting the thing apart, but the question for me was the last question asked by Mary. What is the payback period? That's the first thing a business person should do, and you guys should do. What's the payback period on this survey? Looks like the payback period for Nexus for no projects is infinite. That's a definite no. What's the payback for this user fee? Two years? Sorry, that's outside the window that we've got a fiscal problem. I tabled this whole bloody thing and come back to it next year. You tell me the payback is two months, we need that revenue, let's do it. But two years, even a year is unacceptable. Thank you.
Sorry, my mic wasn't on. No other hands in the schoolhouse. I'll bring it over to Zoom. First hand raised is Karen Askey.
Hi, everyone. How are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, so I wrote a letter. I I realized that it's been ten years since we've done these studies, and we definitely need to do them. I like the idea of bifurcating and doing what we need. It is very clear that we are way undercharging for the parking at the Alpine Inn in Ford Field. This has been raised by Parks and Rec to both Finance Committee and Town Council. It's definitely low-hanging fruit. I question if for the user fee portion, we do need to have a a consultant firm do this, and particularly if Woodside or other like communities, say Los Altos Hills, have these similar user fees. So to Tony's point that we could be challenged, if we are in the ballpark with these like communities, do we feel more comfortable? There would be lower risk. So I'm just throwing that out because I do think we need to look at every cost and figure out how we be smarter in managing it, and can we use our residents on this? Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next up is Peter Littman. And Mr. Littman, I know you had your hand raised earlier, so if you want to include your comments from oral communications from the opening of the meeting, please feel free to do so.
Yes, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I was on an iPad that seemingly wouldn't unmute. I'm now on my computer, and I think it's working okay. This discussion really provides a framework for more general comments I wanted to make about the town's financial picture that are rather in sync with others, and I particularly commend Karen Vatra for her superb.
Shoot. Mr. Littman, you're back on mute. There you go. Now you're back.
Sorry, moving pointer got there. In my case, having monitored the Finance Committee meeting nine days ago, I first became aware of the degree to which, from my point of view, and I do a lot of financial analysis, the town is functionally broke. In June, we were presented with a preliminary budget that showed unallocated unrestricted reserves, and they they have vanished. At this point, we have depleted ninety percent of our total unrestricted reserves during the past five years. And for the current budget, I think we must already be drawing down remaining reserves that had previously been allocated for things like the pension liabilities if if we continue with the proposed nine hundred, roughly nine hundred thousand dollar deficit for the current year. And I was really disturbed that both in the Finance Committee meeting and also in the agenda for this meeting, there there's no place for discussion of trying to reduce expenditures. Actually, the discussion that just has gone on is the kind of thing I would really hope to see, and I would really second the idea of looking at the cost benefit ratio of anything we do. The town's in a financial crisis, but I'm afraid there are very few people aware yet due to our complex accounting and limited reporting of what's been going on. So anyway, I I encourage you to try and communicate where we are and what's being done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next hand raised is Christie.
Yes, I'm I'm aware that Pleasanton did a nexus study and found their fees to be extremely low. And in fact, they were threefold when the nexus study was done, and it really helped with their finances. So I encourage you to call Pleasanton and talk with them regarding the fees that were being able to be brought in after the nexus study. I think impact fees are extremely important, especially for the cumulative effects of projects over a longer period of time, say the eight-year arena cycle. We need to know what the impacts are beyond just the units built. Impact fees for bikers, for roads, and user fees are extremely low right now for the land we own and that we're renting out to to whoever you're renting it to. If it's ten thousand a year for a parking lot, that's not appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Christie. Next up is a phone number that ends in three zero five six. That just went away. Next up is Ronnie Krasinski.
Hi. I I think it'll probably make sense to do the whole study, both of the components, but I heard Tony say that the quote is good for ninety days, so I I think you could just wait. I think you could just wait a couple of weeks until or month, until we get a better handle on the finances. That's my comment. Thanks.
Thanks, Ronnie. And now again, C three zero five six.
Hi, Dana Breen. I mentioned this to the Finance Committee, that a source of immediate revenue would be to take the sheriff and ha, move the sheriff, give the sheriff a cubby in the vacant, I mean, the the town hall, give him a place to sit and take their place and rent it out as a as an office or something until you, until we figure out what we're going to do with that space over there. But, you know, there's revenue there, and the sheriff could easily, the sheriff actually used to have a desk in town hall. So I think that that would be a good, a great immediate measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Again, just for the public, this is about the user fee and the nexus study. So if there's public comment on either of those, hands raised at three zero five six. Is that just Dana? Okay. Then I don't see any additional hands raised. Well, I, whoops, one more. One is coming and going. I'll give it a second here. No, I don't see any additional hands raised, so I will bring it back to the council for discussion. Who would like to start?
I'll start. I, I mean, at the very least, I think we clearly have to move forward with the user study. We don't know what we're, we may be losing significant revenue by not with our ten-year-old user study, so I feel like that's that's actually important to get started fairly soon. The impact fees, I agree, we could wait on those. I mean, if we could break this out, so we were just doing the user study, I think that's the highest priority of these things. I don't know if there's any value to waiting, you know, another month. I think we, I think we know this is it's scary spending money in these circumstances, but I also just, this is, I mean, it's both a best practice and a possible chance to, I mean, we may be losing money on those studies. We don't know. I think we should find out.
Well, I certainly feel the pain of spending money we don't have. And I've been asked the question about whether I want to balance budget, and I do want to balance budget. Whether this is in the budget or not, it's still a lot of money. And it it seems, again, to be one of those things where small towns are getting being, are paying big town dollars for service that gives them less return. So what's the solution? I I guess I do. I was also in touch with Woodside and talked about whether we could piggyback on their their work at all. I think they they certainly feel like needs to be done, and that the fact that they did it three years ago and did it before COVID and had all that income throughout COVID, where we were just going down the tubes, was, you know, shows why we're in such very different financial situations. Thinking ahead is really important, particularly if you're in a health crisis. So with great hesitation, I I think I I've seen a number of other agencies that do this kind of work, and I'm sort of sad we're really had only one proposal, and it came in pretty high. But I think we do need to do it. It's a follow-through on the money that we spent on on the Kirsch report. And it's one of the real obvious things. I I continue to be concerned that we're not ready for. that we're not ready for the money. I mean, that we're actually not yet set up for taking in and accounting for money, and maybe we can understand that a little more. But I have full hope that this is being brought forward at the right moment for us to actually be able to handle the income. And I really appreciate that it is being brought forward, so in general, I'm in, I'm in, I'm in. Yep.
Excuse me. You're supportive of the full contract or?
I'd like to see it done in phases, but I think it needs to be done the most efficient possible way.
Tony, thanks for this, and I want to follow up on the what-if question. What is the risk? Do we know, or maybe it's Catherine, do we know when things have been challenged, what is the risk you're facing? Because you gotta know what the liability is before you decide to spend money to avoid the liability. Do we know? Is it possible to know?
As far as the risk, I mean, it really depends on the likelihood of someone challenging the fee. I would say the risk is more along, is greater with the development impact fees, the NEXUS study portion, than the user fees. I think it's pretty unlikely someone's going to file a lawsuit because the rental fee was too high or the plan check fee was too high. Although you could spend time arguing with an applicant about it, which would, you know, consume staff time and such. But it would be primarily with the development impact fees. You really do want to get those rights because developers can be aggressive.
Okay. I understand that. And conversely, does one take any comfort from piggybacking, well, we're kind of like Woodside? I mean, is that helpful? Can we even know if it's helpful? And if you don't know, you don't know, but I gotta ask the question.
Well, if we were comparable in size and if we had comparable facilities, I mean, yeah, the user piece, it would make sense, but we have different.
Apples and oranges?
Apples and oranges.
Yeah, okay. Because we are in a difficult place tonight. We've got news that we weren't anticipating a month ago that is very serious indeed, and that the Finance Committee and then the Town Council will take up in more detail once we have the ability to understand all of us in a different level than we will tonight. Tonight, we have a sense of it, and I'm hopeful, Tony, that we can have comfort. We're going to be drilling down on that in the future, in the near future. Is that the plan?
Yes, and, you know, the usual toolbox, when a city does face financial crises, is you look at the revenue side. And a user fee study is usually the first, first thing, all right, let's look at our fees, make sure we're charging the correct fee, the appropriate fee, and we're actually collecting the revenue that we should have. And that's, that's
The playbook.
That's playbook 101.
Yeah, okay. So from your perspective, to help you do your job, like to the most efficient, because the other thing we're facing is some potential time constraints that we're going to talk about later in terms of getting our house in order in a way that's proactive, as proactive as we can be right now. So I do want to kind of hear your, do you have any advice? I mean, is this something that you would clearly just go for? Because my instinct, just to put it out there before you confirm or anything, is we need both. We can certainly wait for the impact fee, but I will want the impact fee because we, right around the corner, we're hearing from HCD and it could be additional lost revenue, and the last thing we need is lost revenue.
Right.
So I don't see this waiting too long. I think it's gonna, maybe we feel better and more certain if we stage it.
Yeah.
But I'm kind of curious, because you gotta help guide us through this in part, and I'm not putting it on you.
Right.
But at the same time, I don't want to sell you with something that you think is going to put you back.
Well, I mean, the time is now, and it'll be a priority. But it's, you know, the user fee study, absolutely. The NEXUS study, it's been discussed, it's been talked about. Even though the projects aren't in line right now, but as you mentioned with the housing element, they could be, and having these fees in place already would go, would look a lot better if we waited and we had a project coming up and like, oh, let's implement these fees now. And the developer might have an issue with that. And so I think, I think right now is probably the best time to do it.
Okay, so doing it now would help us be better positioned for what we don't have on the radar now, but we can expect to be some project at some point. And 20, the delta, if we choose one and not the other, is 20 odd thousand, right? Based on what we know. I mean, to me, that's not, like, I'm on the fence about whether that's something worth it. I'm about the process and hitting the timelines to save ourselves. And to that extent, I think we've got to have a little bit of confidence that we're going to have the right discussions in the near future to get us to a place where you know, $20,000 is not going to save us or break us, but it is important. Every dollar is important today.
Right.
So I could go, the summarizing where I'm coming out, I think waiting poses us at great risk of missing timelines that I think we see coming up that will be discussed soon. And I don't like that. I don't, I don't like putting even more daggers over our head for this amount of money. So I would at least do the user fee. I don't see a huge amount to be gained by delaying the impact fee, but I'd be open to do it.
Thank you, Judith. One other question I meant to ask. In terms of how the work is done, I'm assuming the consulting firm is going to need to be working with staff. Is that staff in the finance department or who are they working with?
They will be, they will be interviewing and talking to every department that has a fee. So they'll talk to building and planning. Back to building and planning was their first, like, will there be somebody in building and planning that we could talk to?
Right.
But that will probably be the bulk of their analysis is building and planning.
And so I just wanted to flag that as I know we're resource constrained in building and planning. And so do you anticipate, you know, staff that will be able to work effectively to work through the contract, given the resource constraints we have in building and planning?
Yes, I know we're short-staffed, but they are aware that this was coming forward and they're prepared to work together to get this done.
Okay, great. So yeah, I like the bifurcated approach, the stage approach. I think that, you know, if we don't start now, we're not going to have this money in one to two years and we're in a period where, you know, we're going to be struggling digging out of this hole for five years. So I just don't see the point in waiting. I hear the comments that the NEXUS study is important. I just don't think those aspects are imminent. And I personally would fall on the side of waiting to do that, you know, next year, when we know that, know a little bit more about where we are with our finances and are closer to when we'll be executing things in the housing element.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know when a project will come forward where the fee, where the impact fee would apply. I guess I am, I shared Judith's concern that if we wait too long with it, somebody's going to come in with something and we're going to be, we're not going to be able to apply anything to it because we haven't done this. I mean, how long would you want to wait before, I mean, at what point are you going to feel comfortable spending the extra $20,000? I'm not sure, but.
I guess I'm in the mindset of like, if, you know, there's a lot of little things and a lot of little things can add up at this point. We're going to be talking about, you know, tax, you know, I just think that we need to make cuts somewhere. And I guess, given how long a project takes, I would think that we would have a heads-up pretty far in advance. And at that point, if we wanted to greenlight the NEXUS study, you know, knowing that it was imminent, you could do it.
But if somebody comes into us with a preliminary application and is going through, can we be doing the NEXUS study while they're in? I mean, I feel like, when does, when does, when does the curtain drop on being able to apply an impact fee to a project that came in?
Yeah, that's a good question. The state housing laws have become more, I guess, favorable to developers, that there are tools developers can use to submit what's called a preliminary application to lock in the fees that are in place at that time. So we would not be in a position to be able to increase the fees once that preliminary application is filed that locks them in. So that is something to keep in mind. Correct, they just can submit it and it locks in the fees.
All right, so we
Also, if we wait, we'd have to submit, we'd have to issue an R
Right, right, more work. So given that, I feel like we have two options that we've discussed. One, doing it all together as proposed, and another, doing it bifurcated. And so I'm feeling like I'm hearing, maybe we can take a motion. I'm feeling like I'm hearing a little bit of consensus around doing the full proposal on three council members.
Honestly, I take every single member of the public's concern about spending any dollar, but if we do that, we stay still and we implode. So I'm trying to think about the, we haven't done this for, it's overdue. Like, that's part of the problem is, I've been hearing this since I've been on the planning commission, oh, we got to do one of those. And I know, could have, would have, should have, but right now, I think it's more prudent to set us up to be prepared. Like, the price for me of doing that is worth it, and I know that's not going to be the popular.
Well, and I hate to be cavalier about spending $25,000, but at some point, we have to reach a point where we're not worrying about the $25,000 expenditures. In the meantime, we have to do certain things as if we're going to get to that point. And I'd hate to have a project come in and not be, not be able to levy any impact fees on it because we put this off too long.
Yeah, and anecdotally, I've heard people say our impact fees are, like, other jurisdictions where people may have second homes and the like in the large Bay Area, the impact fees are, are serious. So I think we're missing out on a revenue stream potentially in the relatively near future, not today, obviously, but if an application triggers it, then I get more.
Well, I'm wondering, it takes six months to do this?
They're proposing in nine months.
Yeah, I mean, and no adjustments in the nine months?
That's their proposal. I mean, it could take less, depending on the information they provide, and, but that's their proposal, is nine months.
Yeah, because just sort of off the cuff, three parking lots along Alpine that we rent for almost nothing. Gosh, that would be easy just to fix, and then we'd have that $20,000 in the bank. That would be nice.
You mean, as an alternative, Mary, starting to charge?
Get it done so that you're not waiting nine months. To raise the, raise the fees on the parking and along Alpine.
Take a risk.
Take the big, get the low-hanging fruit done now so that we can, so that we can afford to make them, those are easy things that we understand better than anybody.
But would you do it instead of or in addition to, like, jumpstart it?
Yeah.
Okay, so to me, that's, do we want to jumpstart charging for parking at those Ford Field lots? Is there any?
It's Alpine Hills, Ford Field.
Alpine Hill?
Yeah, apparently there's a parking lot at Alpine Hills.
We rent, we rent, the Alpine Hills lot, part of it is owned by the town, and we rent it to the town for, what is a very low, what is a very low fee?
To the club.
Should, no, Alpine Hills or Alpine Inn?
Alpine Club.
Alpine Hills Club? That's a private club.
I don't know anything about that.
But we rent it to them.
No, 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 that's the park, you're thinking of the park.
There we go. We don't apparently know everything about it, but yeah.
We don't rent anything to Alpine Hill. Alpine Inn, we rent part of the Rosati's field lot, we rent.
Yeah, oh, I know about that. Yeah.
Okay, I don't, I'm not aware of a similar arrangement at Alpine Hill. I've never heard of that.
Okay.
So could you, I'm lost track. What are you proposing?
I was proposing that we just look at some, at things that probably parents go, Anthony, Tony knows well, that we're absolutely missing out on, that we could be getting income for now, the next nine months. Are there, are there things that we see that we all, that you could just go ahead and do? No. Okay, got it.
No, I would, you would, I would be setting a fee and make a challenge.
That would be.
Yeah, so we need it.
We need to have the analysis done by an independent consultant so that we can set the fee, and that if it's ever challenged, it can be defended.
When do we know if we get to phase two? Because there is that inflection point, right? So by definition, we're going to have some information flowing to us before they complete the whole study.
Yes.
We don't know when.
I mean, it's not part of the process. I mean, it's, you're, I mean, I'd be coming back to you piecemeal. And, and it just could be confusing and.
Oh, let me clarify, if we don't, if we don't qualify for phase two, then we're done.
Yeah, but that's just for the NEXUS study, but the user fee study, they'll be, they'll be going forward with that anyway.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, any, any more discussion? All right, I'm sensing that there is consensus around a motion. Meaning that I feel like, is there a motion? My point of view, I'll just be clear, is that I would prefer to bifurcate it and move forward with just a user fee. I feel like those are things that we need to get started on right away. And I think the NEXUS study could be pushed out. I'm feeling like I'm in the minority in that, and so that's why I was wondering.
I'm not sure you're, I mean, that, that would be, that's my idea of the installment plan, yes.
Well, how long, I mean, when would you want to do this? When would you want to initiate the?
I would leave it open-ended. I mean, frankly, you and I won't be on council at that point. It'll be up to the new council. I think, you know, maybe in six months' time, we'll have a much better window on our finances and the new council can make that decision whether they want to bring it back.
Would you want to leave it till the next fiscal year?
I guess I wouldn't be being, I was just, I wasn't going to be directive about that. I personally would just want to approve the user fee portion of this.
I will say, hey, I'm concerned about it being delayed and us missing out on an impact fee some months. So I think I would lean towards, I guess, okay, I will move that we accept the full study as presented in the staff report.
I'm fine with that. And by that, you mean without the cost allocation, right?
$66,000 proposed.
I'm fine with that.
So there's a second, right? Oh, Mary seconded, sorry. Christine.
Councilmember Alves.
Aye.
Councilmember Hufbe.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor is absent. Vice Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Mayor Warnock?
No.
Motion carries.
All right. Moving on to agenda item, excuse me. Number here. Six B. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you very much.
Consideration of approving interim town manager employment agreement and budget amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be presenting this item. So this item is a follow-on to the council's announcement on September 19th that it was separating, entering separation agreement with its prior town manager, Shri Batman, and appointed at that time Cory Stoker-Padalino as this interim, the interim town manager. I was directed to come back with an employment agreement, and that's what this item is before you tonight. I will just want to touch on a few key points of the agreement and then see if there are any questions. So I will just say, as, to preface this, the agreement is based on the agreement that the town entered into with Howard Young when he served as the interim town manager. So that's really the base of the agreement. the interim town manager. So that's really the base of the agreement. As far as the term, the term would go from October 1st, 2024, to January 15th, 2025, or upon the start date of a new town manager. And Cory is entitled to return to her position as assistant town manager at that time. I also wanted to note that the agreement provides for a 10% bump in salary during the term of the agreement. And I wanted to note, there's one typo, I noted that that equates to $6,970 over a six-month period. That's in the staff report. It's a, it should actually be over a three-and-a-half-month period. The agreement is just a three-and-a-half-month agreement, and that is to account for, you know, the expanded duties. The agreement also, or sorry, the item tonight would also authorize the interim town manager to retain consultant services up to $50,000, given, to basically backfill administrative functions of what we have now, or two vacant positions, the assistant town manager position and the town clerk position. And I will just, my understanding is that is primarily intended to backfill the vacant town clerk position, as opposed to the assistant town manager position, which will remain vacant and result in cost savings. Let's see, I think that was it for the key points that I wanted to, to note.
Thank you, Catherine. Questions from the council? No questions? No questions, Mary?
No.
Judah?
Just about the vacant town clerk position, that, just the backfilling, what types of activities? Obviously, you're one person, I just want to understand what you're going to be looking for support for.
So for backfilling the town clerk position, it would be physically clerking the meetings right now, as well as doing a lot of the research, considering that, not to get ahead of the next item, but there is some considerations of special election, as well as the current election process, to ensure that we have all the proper protocols in place for that, as well as to work on our records retention and sort of record management projects.
All right, I don't have any questions, as myself and the vice mayor worked on the contract. So I will open it up to oral communications. I don't see any hands raised in the school. Oh, I do have one. One approaching the podium.
I told you I'd be up here. I object. The last thing this town needs is an assistant town manager. Woodside has never had one. They have an assistant to the town. The second to last thing that we want, interim town manager. I would be fine with a town administrator in the time being, and I believe that people in town would be willing to volunteer to take up that position instead of spending a lot of money. I don't want any more consultants used in this town that let us dry and cost us support. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to Zoom, firsthand raised is Rita.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. I think as far as limits on the person in this position being able to sign off on, for contractors, up to $50,000, there has not been much oversight. And when questions have been asked the public, for all the contractors, you know, we see the information reflected on the warrant list, but when questions have been asked, there have been no answers. And, you know, that's put us into the financial issues that we currently have. You know, I think the person needs to be able to get the tools that they need in order to do their job, but there has to be some type of oversight for this position. And recently, the town, in changing the state disclosure document in that chart, it was in either the last town council meeting or the one before that, said that the town would no longer have an assistant town manager. So that position didn't need to file any paperwork because that position was no longer existing. So it just seems odd that now that position is, is back on there. Will there be some type of change now that that position is back on there? Because on a previous town council meeting, that position was no longer going to be part of our town. So looking forward to some, some answers, but we have a problem with contractors and with contracts and signing limits and finances. We need to not just give a pen in somebody's hand to be able to make cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Next up, phone number that ends in 7, 7562.
Good evening, this is Caroline Van Tongen. Thank you very much. I concur with the residents. We have asked in several years, we want more transparency, we want accountability. We have asked the consultants to be more detailed in what they're doing, and this is just being ignored. Let me remind town council, we have a handbook, and that has been, the role of the town manager was changed under the previous town council members, where the town manager is the only person who can put something forward on the agenda. So in the last, the last town manager, she never attended any of our meetings, and that's a disgrace. I would like to have confirmation that if Cory is actually assigned as the town manager, that she attends or at least understands what's going on, because it's part of the bad communication in town, and it's bad management. So please confirm. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Catherine Gahn.
All right, there we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for taking the time to listen to our concerns. I have two comments with respect to this agreement and the overall arrangement, which is, number one, we have a lot of requests for expenditures, but I'm curious as to what the overall plan is. What is the plan to find a new town manager? I understand we need an interim person in that service, but I'd like to know in the greater scope of things, what the overall plan is for finding a replacement. And number two, I do share the concerns expressed tonight about consulting fees. Many times, we've had consultants come in with supposedly fixed contracts, and then a few weeks or months later, we see a request in the, usually in the consent calendar, for an increase. So I'd like to know, I also share the, I guess, reluctance to give an open-ended, even $50,000 allowance for consulting. We are in a deficit spending situation, and to quote, talk about, quote, saving money by, you know, only capping it at $50,000, we don't have that money to reallocate from salaries. We don't have that money at all. So I'd really like the council to focus in and be cautious about what we're spending money on at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is 3056.
Yes, I want to sort of reaffirm what the two first people said, which is that I, it's unprecedented that we're totally valid and have.
Whoever's there, we can't quite hear you.
You can't, can you hear me now? Better? It's been unprecedented for the town to have an assistant town manager, and that just sort of came out of the blue. It's happened a couple of times when I know our town has been under stress. But when we are functioning, when our government is functioning, when the committees, et cetera, et cetera, we don't need an assistant town manager. We need a fabulous planner, and we need a fabulous administrator or manager. And the rest of it, the people, we can do with them. We can be a team. We can work together. What a concept.
Thank you. Next up, I believe, is Christie.
Yes, my question is, who is the secondary person? Who will be the oversight person for the $50,000? Will it be the mayor? Will it be the vice mayor? Will, will you assign somebody from council? How, who is the oversight person? Thank you.
Thank you, Christie. And for clarification, because there does seem to be some confusion, Cory Stoker is currently our assistant town manager. She has been for the past two years. And this agenda item is about her moving into an interim town manager role while we're looking for a new town manager. There was a subcommittee of Vice Mayor Haskell and Councilmember Hufdi to identify a search firm for that process, and so that is currently underway. But the agenda item for tonight is not about changes to the, the current assistant manager role that's been in place for the last couple of years, other than to elevate temporarily to Cory the position of interim town manager while we're looking for a new permanent town manager. So I hope that helps clarify. Any, I don't see any other hands raised, so I'm going to close oral communications and bring it back to the council. Actually, one just came up, Vicki Baker.
Okay, all right. I haven't been in this town very long, but here's what I have to say. You don't need, I'm with the woman or the person who said that they don't need an assistant town manager. No, you need a good town manager, and that's it. And quite frankly, I don't even know who they're managing. Because if you go over to the town hall, there's nobody who's employed there. If you try to get a building permit, you find out there's one person who happens to be in the building department. So I think you've squandered your money, and my suggestion is, instead of discussing this more, why don't you think about merging with Woodside, who seems to be doing a good job? Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I'm going to close oral communications and bring it back to the council for discussion. Who would like to start?
I'm fine moving this forward.
Mary? Judah?
I'm, we need to continue, and I think this largely represents appropriate terms, given it's what we've historically used with Howard. The only question I have is, given it's $50,000, do we have someone that's going, you know, is it possible to have a member of the town council consult on, on how that's being spent? It's a lot of money over three and a half months. So that's the only thing I would consider, but overall, I'm supportive of it.
Thought we included the word, the wording consult, Judah.
No, that's for director position. Hiring, hiring anyone or making changes in the director level, and that's where the consultant.
Okay, so where are you proposing? Are you proposing a change?
Yeah, I would just ask that that be a requirement for someone on the council to be appointed to consult on the, the spend. It's more about the spend for me than controlling, you know, the workflow or anything like that. It's just making sure we have visibility into what's going on and how it's structured.
And so.
Can I ask a question? I mean, these, I mean, these expenses would typically show up on a warrant list, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I mean, we'd, we'd see them, I mean.
But now with the granularity, I mean, I do take people's points that a lot of the consulting light items, we don't know what they're doing. So that, that's part of the conundrum I have. I think if we just have visibility, I think that will be helpful.
If I may, through the mayor, considering that we've been meeting with the mayor and the vice mayor weekly, I'm happy to go over the contract that we were discussing with the two of you to consult about that when that comes.
Okay.
Yep. Does that work? Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you, Cory. And so with that, I'll just say, I feel very grateful, Cory, that you're stepping up to support the town yet again in this, at this time. I think you are doing a terrific job, and I appreciate everything you're doing. And so I would love to entertain.
And I'll just add that having worked with Cory for two years, our assistant town manager carries a lot of the load in town. If you don't know what she's doing, it's because you're not in the town hall paying attention. So the idea that we don't need our town manager is ridiculous. So, yeah, with that, I will make a movement, motion. I will thank assistant manager, town manager Stoker for her, her work so far, and thank her for agreeing to this, and I will move that we approve this contract.
Roll call.
Councilmember Alfs?
Aye.
Councilmember Hufdi? Councilmember Taylor is absent. Vice Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Mayor Warnikoff?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Cory. All right, sorry, this is. The next item is item number 6C, which is going to be a presentation from town attorney. But before we get into that, I wanted to make some remarks that I, I prepared, because I know this is, you know, an important topic for the community. And I just want to affirm for the community that the council and the staff working together with the finance committee are focused on this work and the series of critical next steps over the next few months to assure financial viability for our town. We've known about the structural deficit, the result of expenses associated with the housing element, and increases to the sheriff's contract exacerbated by staff turnover and increases in legal and consulting fees. We've also known about the need for revenue enhancement measures to address the deficit, as has been reviewed at council and finance committee meetings over the last 16 months. We anticipated the target for revenue enhancement measure was going to be November 2025, but have learned implementation will need to be sooner, within six months. We will be working through this in public over the immediate weeks and months ahead. The item on tonight's agenda is for staff to educate the council and community about our revenue measurement options, to provide an overview of each from an election mechanics standpoint. This will lay out the groundwork for the council and community to have a shared understanding of the process and timelines for each. It is a discussion and an overview with no action being taken, and we will brainstorm possible, but we will brainstorm possible timelines. We welcome your input, put, and feedback and public comment. I want to underscore that this agenda item is not a discussion tonight about specific financial scenarios or the budget, and will not include an update from the finance director. Looking ahead, we have the finance committee meeting coming up this Monday, October 14th, where our director of finance will review the financial scenarios, building upon the September 30th meeting, and look for recommendations from the committee based on the clarification of options that we'll be discussing tonight. We will then have our final budget approval on October 23rd, where we'll review, cut, review cuts to expenses, our hiring freezes, and other measures to cut costs. Continuing steps will likely be on every agenda through a public process through the end of the year, and all hands are on deck. We want to assure the public that we're working together and we are focused on the future. And so with that, I would like to give the floor to Catherine. Well, we'll be reviewing, again, this is picking up from where the finance committee left off in their meeting on September 30th, where the discussion was identifying, narrowing in, I should say, on several different revenue measure options. And so this is to give some framework around the process for each of those.
Great, thank you, Mayor and council. And I am going to go over three revenue enhancement measures that have been discussed at finance committee, but I have just been told by Zoom that they don't want to let me share my screen. And so I'm wondering, Cory or Christine, if I could send you a document to share? Okay, great. If you could just give me one second while I do that.
Why don't, just so we can make sure we haven't, and people aren't feeling rushed, let's take a five-minute break. It's 8:27. We'll get back together at, at 8:32. All right, 7:32, call the meeting back to order. I was just informed that I misstated that the finance committee meeting is on Tuesday, the 15th, not Monday, the 14th. So Tuesday, look forward to an update from the finance director at the finance committee meeting on Tuesday, the 15th. meeting on Tuesday the 15th. Thank you. And with that, Catherine.
Great, thank you. So we have up on the screen a chart showing three different revenue measures, and we can make this available on the website after the meeting, of course. This, these are the three measures that were discussed at the last finance committee and have been discussed basically over the last year or so. And the, the idea here is to discuss the timing of the election and some of the deadlines, the process for getting these three potential options on the ballot, and the timing of when the revenue would be available. And inadvertently, they're sort of in the order of how quickly the revenue would be available. So we'll just go, go with that. So the first option that's been discussed is related to the utility user tax, and the proposal would be to temporarily divert the 2% UUT from the open space fund to the general fund for a fixed period of time. So that would essentially be not increasing the total amount of tax that, that residents pay, but rather redirecting the 2% for general fund purposes. This measure, if, if the council elected to do so, could be put on the ballot as soon as March 4th, 2025. And it's important to note that the state law and the county registrar set a deadline to file paperwork with the county, and it's always 88 days prior to the election. So when you do the backwards math, that means that you need to get the registrar of voters, the materials, no later than December 6th, 2024. And the materials would be an election resolution that the town council approves, placing the measure on the ballot. The election resolution typically includes the, the ballot question, the deadlines for the arguments, those kinds of mechanics. And you'd also need to provide the actual ordinance language. In the case of the UUT, we do, the, the town's code does have a chapter on the UUT, so the, the ordinance would essentially be an amendment, red line and strike through, showing that temporary diversion of the, of the 2% for whatever period of time the council elects to, to do that, that temporary diversion. The revenue would become available relatively soon upon certification of the election results, within, so sort of within a month or two, essentially, of that March 2025. In terms of the vote threshold, this is where we actually did some deep thinking, the, and basically concluded that this would just need a simple majority to pass. And that's because this really should be considered a new general tax. General taxes require a 50% plus one to pass. Special taxes, on the other hand, require a two-thirds. So what effectively the voters would be asked to do would be to pause a special tax and enact a new temporary general tax. And so this would require a simple majority to do so. One really important nuance about general taxes, though, is that they can only be adopted at regular municipal elections. These are elections where city council members are elected, unless there is an accompanying declaration of fiscal emergency. That allows you to put a general measure on, that would go to the general fund, it'd be a general tax, on a ballot, on a special election ballot. And I know this discussion about fiscal emergency has been, has been discussed in the finance committee. I understand that Tony and the finance committee are looking at the necessary findings to make that declaration. I can't speak to that tonight, but I did just note that that is a necessary prerequisite in order to put that UUT on for the March ballot. I'm going to pause there and see if they're going to take questions one by one, or if I should just go on to the next one.
Is it helpful to take questions one-on-one, one-to-one, guys?
I, I just have a quick one to clarify what I think you said. The UUT can be characterized as a general tax. If it were a special tax, it would require a two-thirds vote plus fiscal emergency declaration if we want that timing. Is that right?
So general taxes would require the fiscal emergency finding.
Okay.
Yes, if this, so special taxes do not need the fiscal emergency finding in order to go on a specific ballot, but this is being characterized as a general tax because it's, it would be going to the general fund.
And temporarily diverting, when we come out of that, would the open, if we want to go back to allocation to the open space, would that require a two-thirds vote again? Like, can we reverse course?
Yeah, I would, I, I would see that as this baking, there would, there would be no need to do another vote. The, the, the one vote could be done to do the temporary diversion and just, it would automatically go back after the, whatever it is, three years, four, whatever it is, the period of time.
Without a two-thirds.
Without a two-thirds. And that's because the law only requires the two-thirds to, to renew or increase taxes. It doesn't require a two-thirds to reduce or eliminate taxes.
But we would be renewing it, like pausing could be seen as renewing when it starts up again.
Our, our take on it is that would not require the, the
Okay.
Two-thirds, yeah.
Say some what we know now.
Yeah. Some what we know now. And I will say, you know, of course, we, this came, this item did come together quickly, so, but I, we did do quite a bit of thinking about, about this one.
Okay.
Do you have to get signatures for these things?
No. There is, there is a path to do a resident-sponsored revenue measure, but that is not what we're talking about tonight.
So the town doesn't have to do signatures on any of these things?
Correct.
Including, okay, we'll get to the others. Thank you.
Go ahead.
All right, so then I'll move on to the next one, which is the parcel tax. So this one would impose a parcel tax at a fixed rate per parcel for a fixed duration. And I don't have the numbers of the rates that being considered or the duration that's being considered, but that is the, the general idea. And I, I also would note that this could be placed in the general fund or could be a special fund, because regardless of how you slice or dice it, parcel taxes require a two-thirds majority to pass. So that would be a decision for the council with input from the finance committee about how to, and I've seen them, I've seen them both ways. In terms of the timing, here again, the, the committee has been considering, in conjunction with the finance director, that March 4th, 2025 election, with, again, that deadline of December 6th, the 88 days prior to get all those materials over to the county. In terms of, and, and the timing of revenue here is, is different, though, and this has to do with when the, the tax could be placed on the assessors' tax rolls and be paid by the property owners. And so the timing, as I understand it from the finance director, the soonest the town could see the increased revenue from a parcel tax would be December 2025. We talked about how parcel taxes require a super majority or a two-thirds to pass, and in terms of whether you would need to make a declaration of fiscal emergency, no. Would it hurt? Probably wouldn't hurt to have, one, in terms of to get voters to vote on it, and also if, if the council were to decide to put the UUT and the parcel tax on, then they would need to do the fiscal, you would need to the fiscal emergency for the UT. So, so that's essentially the, the parcel tax item in a nutshell, and I'll pause there.
Yep. Are there any requirements for having, being updated in audits for any of these?
In order to place it on the ballot, I'm not aware of one. We'll look into that. I don't see any other questions.
That would be a serious catch-22 if you couldn't put it on the ballot, if you didn't have an audit.
Any other questions before we, on, on the parcel tax, before we move on? Okay, Catherine, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So the, the last one on the chart here is charter city status plus a companion real estate transfer tax. And this is based on the state law and a state ballot proposition that says that cities cannot impose an additional real estate transfer tax unless they are charter cities. And based on that, actually, several cities in California have decided that they want to become charter cities, that they can impose that real estate transfer tax. Now, if you're a charter city, you can, you can have a very elaborate charter that has all sorts of different rules that differ from state law. My understanding of what's been discussed at finance committee has been a very simple charter that basically says state law applies except for, in the context of real estate transfer taxes. Other cities have gone that route. I understand that St. Helena has a ballot measure on this November to become a, to become a transfer, sorry, become a charter city and a companion real estate transfer tax measure that would impose, I can't remember the, the exact tax, if, and only if the charter city measure passes. Let's see, so the way to become a charter city is laid out in the state law, in the government code. I would also note that my understanding of what's been discussed at finance committee is to have that real estate transfer tax available for general fund purposes, so it would be a general tax. As far as the election date goes, this is where, I guess, a bit of bad news. In, in looking into this option, I, I discovered that in order to become a charter city, that election needs to be at a statewide general election. And those only happen every two years, so this November 2024 is a statewide general election, the next one is not until November 2026. There are a few other requirements in the government code that, process, procedures such as public hearings that need to be held before the, the measure, the charter can be placed on the ballot. But obviously, there'd be plenty of times to do that. So 88 days prior to the election, same rule applies, which means everything by August 2026. And then when the, the revenue would actually be available to the town, this would then apply to sales, real estate sales after January 1st, 2027. It would be a general tax, it would require a simple majority, well, it would require a simple majority to become a charter city, and also a simple majority to impose that tax. No need for a declaration of fiscal emergency for the charter city option. And that concludes the information that I have.
Thank you, Catherine. Any, any questions about the charter city real estate transfer tax approach? So this one, I'll just, for, for additional context, I think at the finance committee meeting, there was a lot of interest in this one, but I think the anticipation was that it would be something that would be available to us sooner through a March ballot. And so the, as, as Catherine said, the bad news is, is that based on her research, this is not something that we could do until next year, November 2026, which would have been in line with the timing that we had been anticipating doing it. But now, obviously, is not something that are going to meet, is going to meet the, our short, short-term needs.
Quick question, just ballpark, what is the rate of the real estate, like, what's the typical tax rate?
So I think there's, there's a range, and this is what Tony, Tony is going to be preparing some scenarios for each of these for the finance committee on Tuesday.
I will say for, and I don't have that information off the top of my head either, but the city of St. Helena does have a really terrific website with FAQs about their charter city proposal that I think has answered that question as to, as to that city.
Yeah, I, I recall the finance committee was distinguishing between the appropriate rate for St. Helena and what might be appropriate here. So I think there's a decent amount of variability, but, but wait for the finance committee to weigh in and refine its understanding.
So if there's no more questions, I will move to public comment. Thank you very much, Catherine.
The only, the only question I have is, is this chart going to be available publicly?
Yes, we'll put it on the website after this meeting.
So there are no hands raised in the schoolhouse, and I do not see, there is one hand, a couple of hands, or one hand raised so far on Zoom, Kristy.
Yes, was there a formal recommendation from the finance committee? I believe they had five options, and I'm seeing three here. And they may even have had seven options. So I want to make sure we've captured everything that they discussed. And I actually thought that the chair was going to do the presentation in addition to our lawyer, which would have maybe been nice to make sure that we've captured everything. Then I do remember that Mary Huffty proposed our town become a charter city within a couple of her first meetings, and we just didn't listen, and now it's too late to become a viable option before 2026, 27. So I think we really should be listening to each and every person and have more thorough discussions. I liked Carter's idea of if you do town council discussion meeting, so, and then in the future, and then on the opposite meeting, do action meetings. So I think that's a really great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will bring it back for council discussion. Comments from the council. And again, this is just discussion tonight. One of the things I think we need to start thinking about as a council, you know, just, just looking out at the upcoming meetings, as mentioned, we have the finance committee meeting on 15th. Then the following week, we have our budget meeting, where, you know, we will be taking a look at, at, at the very short-term budget cuts. But as we look forward at our next council meeting, that would be, that's not a special meeting, would be November 13th. I think if we were to go forward with the fiscal emergency, that would probably be the most likely date, as I'm looking at the calendar, so I just wanted to put that out there for discussion. I did have this chart earlier today, so I've had a little bit of time to digest it in advance. But that's kind of how I'm seeing the cadence of things, assuming we end up at least going the, the route of the UUT.
I think we should at least prepare for that. I think we should, yeah, be prepared to declare a fiscal emergency then, or if we have to have a special meeting later before the 6th, one way or the other, but yeah. I think we have to keep all these options open.
Is there a downside of declaring a fiscal, maybe sooner?
Well, I don't think we need, I mean.
I want to make sure that we have the findings that can, to support the fiscal emergency, and so we want the finance committee to do its work there.
I, I don't feel like I've had enough information or time with this information to, to have an opinion on that right now. I mean, it's quite likely that we need to be prepared, and we should be prepared, but I need the finance committee and then our budget discussion before I'm personally going to be comfortable with such a significant decision.
Agreed.
It, it's sort of icing on the cake, but is there any reason we can't do a charter that incorporates more of the kind of changes that we want to see in our government if we do a charter city? Do we have to go, in your opinion, with the simplest?
That'll be up to the council, that'll be up to the council when
Right.
I think that, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Catherine, but Catherine was representing the discussion that was at the finance committee, which was
I see. Got it.
Right.
And of course, the other thing that I keep coming back to is And of course, the other thing that I keep coming back to is, well, what happens when we run out of money? And if we're, can we automatically become a San Mateo unincorporated? Or do we have to get all the signatures and everything to, in a vote and everything?
So I'm personally aware of the lack of time the public has had with this and the lack of complete information that we have right now. I do not think it's going to help anybody to go into what ifs when we have, we're going to have that information very soon. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't go there. I will say that the Charter City, the Finance Committee was discussing it as how cheap can we get this done? And cheap equals streamlined. The more you want to get creative, that's possible, and it's a discussion topic, but it will cost you more. So that, that's the context in which they were recommending not doing much.
I understand that. I just wondered whether you can come back and perfect that process or whether once it's done, it's done.
I'm sure people can update the charter from time to time.
Thank you.
But I think to Judith's point, what we wanted to do tonight is educate, you know, assure that everybody has a shared understanding of what these options are. These are the three revenue enhancement options that the Finance Committee was reviewing. There were other options that weren't revenue enhancement measures. So these are the three that were discussed there.
I would say that the thing that's missing in, on this chart is how much money we get for each of these.
So that will be part of the discussion on, with the Finance Director on Tuesday. So thank you. It doesn't seem like there's any other discussion. This is helpful background. Hopefully, it'll be informative to the discussion with the Finance Committee on Tuesday, and we will go from there. So thank you, Catherine, very much. Moving on to item number seven, which is the council subcommittee liaison and regional reports. Does anybody have any updates?
Yeah, I, Emergency Preparedness Committee met last Thursday morning. I was unable to attend. I had a personal issue come up. They are, they're sort of looking at, they, they made a list of 14 priorities that they would like to sort of spend the next few months working out and trying to sort of organize for themselves. They'll, they'll want some council guidance on that, but it'll probably happen in the beginning of next year. They also, I think, last week, they repaired, they did, they worked with the Fire District and did a repair to the AM radio tower. Apparently, they fixed some significant static issues with it, and it now covers the entire city again, or town again. So we thank, thanks to them. It was, it was the Fire District and several members of the EPC, so. Thank you to them, and it's, AM 1580 works again.
Thank you, Jeff.
There's one on here, the October 2nd High School Pedestrian Traffic Safety Committee. And it's relevant, I think, because there's a request that there be somebody assigned to that committee in terms of staff so that we can move along with the CCG initiatives, the Safe Routes to Schools, et cetera, that require a response from the town. They have some, apparently, we submitted a plan, but it's, it's been lost to follow-up. And they, they would like to have some, some representation from staff so that they could figure out what to do to get that back. So because the engineer always has that, that we have the show come and the, and the engineer, we wanted that to be part of the job description for the, the entity you're hiring, if that's possible.
You can definitely have that discussion with the town engineer.
And then, of course, the ongoing, the Skyline Boulevard project will require interaction with the engineer as well, if we can pull that off, which would be very exciting. I had a couple of other reports that I thought were supposed to be in here, so.
Mary, shall we give an up, a short update on our subcommittee status? We're not done.
You want to, you want to try it?
Yeah, see what I missed. Mary and I are on two subcommittees together. One is to assess recruiting firms or other support that would be available to help us select an interim town manager. The idea would be Cory's contract would be limited in time. However, given the, where we are in terms of the year, the year-end, and a new council coming up, it's extremely unlikely we will have a, a permanent town manager recruitment even kicking off by the end of the year, never mind having selected it. So we are looking for a recruiting firm that could be appropriate for the recruiting an interim town manager. And so the status of it is, we've conducted several interviews. We're waiting for information from a couple of them as to pricing and timing. And we will expect to make a recommendation to the council on a couple of firms to consider in, in the meeting on the 23rd. The second subcommittee we're on is to select the members of the Ad-Hoc Site Evaluation Committee. People have been submitting applications. We've been getting great, great activity. I mean, it's, it's a tough time of year to get people's attention, but we've got great applications. We're going to be conducting interviews soon and, and then make a recommendation to the town council. So Mary, feel free to add if there's something.
You may be uncomfortable with my just saying that there's another avenue which we have explored, which is the pro bono rather than necessarily using a recruiting firm. Yeah, Cal Cities did have a list of 160 emails that they can just send out for an interim all at once. And that would require considerable more effort from the, the council. But it's not insurmountable, I don't think. And also Stanford has access to all of its alumni and all of its graduate students through the careers, through their career center and have offered that service pro bono.
So, so those would be standard, the, the alternative would be bringing forward a couple of standard recruiting firms who do this type of thing, recruiting for an interim town manager is a bit of a different task than the permanent. So we've identified several who are focused on interim. And Mary's been evaluating kind of postings on bulletin boards of socially, like engage, I mean, social, I forget what the title of the department is at Stanford, but essentially people who are in the public service and, and.
Oh, the Center for Innovation.
Yeah, that's it.
Center for Social Innovation is the one who spearheaded it.
Right, and then you also identify Cal Cities as a, another posting vehicle. So we can bring forward those, but our task was to identify the recruiting firms, and that's well underway for that. And then after that, the council would weigh in on the town, the recruiting firms, or if they choose this other route. And then we don't know exactly how long it would be to recruit. We've had some optimism that this wouldn't be very time-consuming, but we just don't know. We're waiting for that information from the recruiting firms to give us timelines, how long they think it might take.
Some optimism about the interim recruitment not taking too long?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. That's right. But we don't, we don't have anything in writing, and I don't want to mislead anybody. I want to provide that information when we actually have information.
I think it's, it's cheap.
Which?
On the given hire, so.
Okay.
And I know.
It, it, it's not that cheap. Okay, so the numbers that we've heard but have not gotten in writing, they need to be considered by the council. So let us get you that information.
And we had talked about the possibility, some firms will combine the interim search and then sort of come back and you do a permanent search with the same firm. Are we, are you talking with them? Are we including that as part of the discussion?
We are getting a sense of which firms could do both. But as far as getting out, and it's a big deal for them to kind of put together a proposal for the permanent town manager process and timelines, that's, that's going to slow us down if we want to act quickly to identify an interim town manager. So we will bring that information forward as a can they continue on to the council. We're not activating them on that, because that could be a 60-day, like, process for them or, you know, 30 days to be thoughtful about that and how that would work.
Thank you. Any, any other reports? Nope. All right. I will open it up for public comment on the liaison reports. No hands raised in the schoolhouse, one on Zoom, phone number ending in 7582, or is it 7562?
Good evening, Caroline Fertongan. Thank you, Mary, for a wonderful summary of the PPTS. We were wondering who the subcommittee is that was proposed by Greg Hughes to town council meetings before, who will help us move this project forward. It's not just, we hope that it's not just Mr. Zelker's proposition, but everything within the Bay Area to make sure that a Vision Zero gets accomplished. And then secondly, the hire of a new town manager. I think you guys have had bad experiences with hiring, with using a consulting company, especially when they're specialized in government employees. I, I would like to suggest to take a different approach and look back. I forget how Angie Howard was elected. In my opinion, she was a great office manager or town manager. And perhaps we should go back and see how it was done in the past. Yeah, it's a huge call, and obviously, we had bad luck. No, we didn't have bad luck. It was a bad choice. So please consider other configurations. You need a, a, a person who's dynamic, who understands our general plan, who understands this town and how beautiful and how special it is. And then who knows how to communicate between all the committees, and that's it. And then propose it to the town council. It's as simple as this, but they have to have knowledge of a budget, not their own personal interests. So that's my proposition, and I hope you will consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last hand raised on Zoom. So I will bring it back to the council and close that agenda item, and meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.